Alright, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Community Preservation Committee regular meeting. It is Thursday, August seventeen, twenty twenty-three. We are live at the Primetime Building and also available via Zoom. This meeting is being recorded and can be viewed at a later date on the Town of Dayton YouTube channel. If we could all please stand for the ladies. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we'll just start off quick with member introductions. I'm Kevin Smith, chairperson and also Parks and Recreation Representative Jonathan.
I'm Jonathan Gail, I'm the ADA coordinator for the Town of Dayton and the Chair of the Disability Commission.
I'm Dave Uckerson, At-Large Member and Financial Officer.
I'm Brandon Sidroni, also an At-Large Member.
Dan Higgins, Plankford Representative.
Dan Gales, Historical Commission Representative.
Alicia Wilson, At-Large Member and Vice Chair.
You're currently our Conservation Commission Member. Paul Reynolds was unable to join us and we have a vacancy in the Housing for our Housing Representative at the moment as well. I'm gonna start off with financial reports. Dave, I'm not sure you probably haven't heard of certain updates. So I have some stuff, I have the most recent ledger. We're half, I was gonna send it to everybody, but we had this massive top-wide email shutdown, which is causing us grief. I had a heart attack because I switched it over on my phone and I haven't been able to do it on the computer yet and then I lost my inbox.
Oh, no.
But then it came back after the nation. So I'll put together something similar to, and I'll coordinate with Dave, I'll put something similar like I did the spreadsheet for when we did the library building walkthrough day. So I think it's a little bit easier to read. But just, so right now, our current overall balance is one million, twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, eighty-eight cents. We do have, under liabilities, we have ten thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars, which is still owed to us from prior year's taxes. Our Open Space Fund is currently fifty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. The Historic Resources Fund is fifteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. Our Undesignated and Reserved Fund is three hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighteen cents. And then we have two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-four cents, which were prior years projects, so those funds have already been allocated from past projects, the Historic Markers Project, the Vital Records, the Mount Lake Playground, Mount Lake Lighting. Both men are all kind of condensed into that. That number that we have currently, because we just switched over to school years, doesn't reflect the library building project, but the numbers I recited are correct. Balances, the balance, like really it shows the undesigned fund is six hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-four. We had to take out the three oh three. So I think overall, we're actually a little, and that's not taken into account any collection of taxes that we've had. So far this year, only a month in, but. So those will slowly grow, because we have the allocations of thirteen thousand per category plus the eighty-five thousand over the course of the year that will go back into the undesigned reserve fund. So I think overall, our standing balances are a little bit better now that the prior year's books have been closed and we've received all the funds that we were waiting to technically request. I think we're anticipating that the undesigned one after the library is gonna be a little bit south of two hundred thousand. And we're actually sitting at three hundred and eighteen, so not too bad.
I kind of was very, I'm pretty much, it's normally towards the end of the year that we just receive, like if anything, we get our additional state funding that was given towards CPA large.
That will be in typically that first reimbursement will be November. And then like last year, when we had the second one, it came out in December. We usually, I know that, I don't know if you all saw, it was probably two weeks ago or so, so I sent out an email to everybody that they're currently working to try to get some more funds earmarked. It's always helpful to reach out to the state reps and stuff to kind of show that we do have a desire for them to help.
Do we, do we know that might have improved in the budget?
Already?
You know?
I haven't heard any mention of it. I know that they were, he, the email he had sent, he had spoken about that they were looking to match the prior year's funds of, I think, two hundred million, I would think is the number that rings in my head. So they were trying to match at least that funding and then try to get additional. But I haven't heard any additional correspondence, whether or not it was, you know, part of that budget, part of, we're sure it is part of the state budget, or whether or not anything has passed so far. Anyone have any other questions or financial reports?
The other one is, it would not be until November, until we understand what, if anything, we are, I'm sorry, it's not, that's a co-process, that we're capital, the potential library reinforcement.
For as far as grant funding?
Grant funding.
So.
I may have.
We got, we got some, I think.
So we'll, I, one, we actually, we'll talk a little bit more about that once we get into our first thing on the old business, which is funded projects updates. So yeah, one thing with the, with the library that I know of, and I think Jonathan did speak to this as well, this is on the Library Building Committee. So Pat, you know, yeah, so you guys, almost everyone knows. So we didn't receive that initial two hundred thousand dollar grant for HVAC, but the town is planning to reapply, so there is the potential that if funded, that we'll still get that, that two hundred thousand back. So that's still the goal of the Library Building Committee to seek out that grant. They're gonna change the language in it a little bit, because I guess the grant order was not giving some feedback on what they were looking for, so.
From the sounds of it, people that reviewed the grant didn't understand all the moving parts of it enough to put together like their, you know, agreement to be able to fund it. So Mike and Jocelyn did sit down and talk to them, so I believe the date was yesterday, the sixteenth that it was due by, or it's sometime soon. Jonathan, do you remember?
It's this week.
Yeah, yeah, it's this week for the grant to go back in. So they were going to tighten it up and put in specs so everyone that read it would understand what was going on with the HBC.
Yeah, and I think I spoke to Mike on Monday, because he had some questions about like where we were with funding and stuff, because that plays into the equation too. Anybody else, if anything, do you have anything to add on the library? Jonathan?
No, I think that separately from that, just so that everyone knows, if you haven't heard, the, this is not related to us directly, but we've talked about this before. So I'm just gonna mention that the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars projected cost for shelving, equipment, tables, et cetera, et cetera, was also approved by, actually by the legislature, and that has been signed by the governor. So we, if everything holds true, including this two hundred thousand dollars, we should be on target and on budget for the library overall. I know there were questions before that we've all asked, well, what if we went over budget, what if we missed that? But right now, we seem to be on target with everything, which I think is great, so.
So hundred and seventy-five from the state budget is a really great big help for the furnishings, furnishings, furniture, equipment line. That's a huge, huge help.
Yeah, it should bring it home.
It should.
It should.
barring no unforeseen circumstances.
Are they gonna hurry up and buy it before the price goes up? It doesn't seem like anything's happening.
To buy what?
Furnishings. Run out as fast as you can.
Yeah, that all, you know, there's a, that whole process they have to follow. And I do know that the Library Building Committee, Jim talked about the next steps as far as the building goes and what he has to do. So he has to go ahead on some designs for the ramp to be done, on the outside ramp, which BP students are gonna help on, so they'll work on those specs. I also know that the restoration of the columns historically, Jim's coming to our commission meeting in September, so we can talk about that. So that's, that's a historical renovation that we're on the way. So it's a slow process, but yeah, it's there.
Yeah, the ramp, the ramp specs, in fact, I just got from Jim yesterday to make sure they're compliant for the ADA regulations. So I'll be looking at that in the next couple of days and I wanna get it back to him by the next week with a thumbs up, thumbs down, or question mark. And assuming it needs, everything is supposed to, then it can go right over to start to get work done and get assigned to the students as well.
Right, right, they get back in school.
Yes, the goal is to get it quickly, so it gets on their list early when school opens.
So as far as other projects, I know, so I know that prior to Mr. Fontaine leaving us, that they had just started to do some work on at Lincoln Village for the electrical panels. I'm gonna follow up with the Director of Housing to try to make sure if they have bills that need to be submitted, we get them, because we don't have anybody in all those. I believe that Tom Ferry is still on the Housing Authority, like the Housing Commission, correct? Is anybody else?
Yes.
Yes, correct. So I'll talk to him and just have him at that, maybe at the next meeting, bring up the fact that we do need a representative from housing to make sure that they, we have some correspondence from them. It's from the Parks and Rec perspective. Okay, talked about in the last meeting, we kind of ran out of time with Bristol Plumbing to finish the lighting, so that's still kind of in the window. Like again, I don't think we're gonna spend a bunch more money out of what was allocated, but this might be little things. Mount Lake Playground, I had one last piece that I ordered, which was the nets, the protective nets for the play, between the baseball field and the playground. And the only other thing that we were working on, and I'll bring you back to you from the sign company that Town News was just an actual sign for the playground. That would be the last piece of that project and then hopefully we can, I'd like to try to hopefully, actually, we don't need to go to town meeting for that one, it's just gonna be closed out, so there's no major rush for any, any special town meeting guidelines. The Bull Ramp project has kind of ever evolved that we're currently, we've finally secured an appraiser to reappraise the property, because obviously the value has changed significantly, I'm guessing significantly between twenty nineteen and now. So we're working on getting that property reappraised. I don't think that I'm gonna meet the deadlines to bring it back to the CPC and then to specialists, probably gonna end up getting pushed off unfortunately until annual town meeting. But I'm gonna assume that at some point, there's gonna be a request to probably amend the original article for the Bull Ramp project to meet the criteria that we need, so that the state can move forward and do their portion.
Do you think it would, I mean, if hired and put already, yeah, a group of fifty thousand dollars?
So yeah, I think the original appraisal was forty-seven thousand and then there was some, there was seventeen thousand, five hundred used for the original appraisal. Actually, it might have been, I'll have to go back and look. Because actually, it might, it might, it might have, yeah, seventeen, 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 one thousand, seven hundred and fifty. But it might have been for two pieces of property that kind of intersected the road, because we did actually purchase one piece. It's a very small piece on the corner, just because the road itself actually crossed somebody's property. So we purchased that piece on the corner heading northbound. And then the property that we need to, that we need on the south side is what needs to be reappraised. Because I think it was originally appraised at the forty-three thousand, forty-seven thousand. And it's just an assumption, but I would assume that, because property values are vastly different that are not gonna be able to purchase it for the same amount that we were able to in twenty nineteen. So we're kind of waiting for the appraisal report to come back and then we'll take the next steps. But I just foresee that we're gonna be, that it's gonna have to be an amendment to the original article then. Oh, I thought you were.
No, wait, no, no.
Something, I just wanted to check it, they don't give out anything. Other than that, I know that, so the Vital Records restoration has started. I haven't seen that. They'll probably, Mike will probably pass along those bills at some point, because it.
I talked briefly with Rachel and Sharon about it.
Yeah.
And Rachel, Rachel Mellon, she said that they've prepared, preparing the books to go out, or they were, you know, they were just waiting for the conservator, that that project is moving along, so I feel the right protection, you know, with our, and I was offered to help them in any way that I could as, as far from commission, you know, so.
Yeah, we wanna kind of just act as the liaison between that and the appreciation, that gets, I'm assuming at some point, there's gonna be some payment due.
Right, right, you know, but they were on top of it, and he said, whatever's on there.
Do you, everything as far as historical surveys is complete as of this point?
Yeah, we're, we're still working on the survey that's out there, the F five, F five twenty-three.
Yeah, so that, what we call phase two.
Yeah, yeah, so that was, the North Side one is still out there, Stacy's making progress on it. We've gotten survey forms to review, we're in the process of doing that and giving back to her. I do know she had reached out to CRI Technologies for the mapping piece, so that started. So it was a slow start, but it's moving along quickly now. She hasn't built anything yet, or.
That's all we have for project updates. Anybody else? Next thing I had under old business was the Dayton Trails Committee application for eligibility. I'm not sure if we spoke about it in the last meeting, but Jeff, the Chair of the Trails Committee, actually withdrew their application simply because they were able to get funding from an additional, another source. But he does think at some point, as that the planning progresses and it gets in direction from the state again, that they'll come, they'll have the ability to come back with us if they, if needed, when, once they have the planning.
I have a general question, because I guess we never really got into the weeds of that one, because it was a fraud.
Yep.
But there was a question about eligibility for planning, or correct, it was like, just the planning phase? Is that money eligible for CPC? Obviously, if they were constructing a trail, yes, that would be an eligible project. But just the design, planning is, and is that eligible?
Yeah, so I did go back, I don't remember the exact language off the top of my head, but immediately, almost immediately after that meeting, I did go back and it is, it would actually be eligible. Yeah, the, the planning portion of creating a recreational opportunity is, is eligible. So I have to go back and find exactly the language, but I did, I did find that and it was, it was in fact, it would have been eligible. So new business, perspective, new projects. I don't, from Parks and Rec, we don't have anything immediately in the pipeline that we're gonna be worked, that we have worked on outside of just maybe the revisitation of the Bull Ramp, so I don't know. Anybody else has anything that they?
No, even from an ADA perspective, I don't have anything yet. I'm gonna be meeting Lieutenant Minister next week to go through a number of things. I don't know that anything will pop up at that point either, frankly, so as in, I don't know.
I mean, one thing that, so a former member and actually who was an applicant at one time, who withdrew, Ron Smith, and I, I talked to him quite a bit. He did have the great idea of how they used to be a little bit more proactive and actually going out and seeking things as opposed to, you know, waiting for stuff to come to us. So by all means, if you, you have an idea or you know a group that would be CPC eligible, that has a project, I mean, absolutely bring it to attention.
It's always a topic at the Historical Commission. And we just have a lot of information that we're dealing with, trying to figure out what's the best move to take for next steps for preservation and so on.
I think it would be helpful to, to send out not just a, an email reminder to the committees and the commissions, but to post something on the town website perhaps, along with a simple verse, simple, spiced version of the criteria as a reminder for projects, because that might spawn interest and conversation. So at some point.
Yeah.
You know, whenever you're able to, or to put something.
Yeah, we can certainly kind of recycle some of the information we used from our annual public meeting and the library walkthrough, I think some of that was simplified and was, was easier to understand than the full application. But yeah, I'm just kind of, everybody, keep your eyes out.
Yeah.
We don't have to sit here and wait for some, people to bring stuff to us.
Maybe somebody could write something up, you're a pretty good writer. I think, and you could work with a white hat to make sure it's legal and everything. Maybe you can write something up for the town website, just with the criteria that we're looking for.
Okay, I think it's pretty much with, you know, Kevin was just saying, because he had something he shared.
Oh, you had something before.
We can have, um, public meetings here with your library.
They would probably almost rework that flyer to some extent.
And if you want it to be legal, we have a tiny chance.
You know, take the fifth, that's right. Yeah, I think maybe too, just emphasizing on the town website, the fact of year-round funding too, because I think it was always kind of prior to this composition of the committee, it was always kind of open and closed from one time to another, where we're trying to be a little bit more open and inviting to different projects. So we think we can push that to, you know, you don't have to wait till, you know, January and scramble to get it in for June, this meeting. You can come to us now and, I forget, we're not gonna make it into special, but we're certainly be prepared to make a little bit more informed decision as annual town meeting comes up next year.
I don't know what committee this is running, because it's Adrian Parkes and it's Parks and Open Space. Would like to get more information at some point around agricultural conservation. Only because the way it seems to work is the state will put up a huge chunk of the money for the small piece, even as low as five percent, within the common circumstances, by the town for agricultural conservation, you know, restrictions.
Right.
I don't know which properties in town, which is already would be eligible for them, that's something that would have to be investigated, but it's something.
We can probably go back and look at, not, it wasn't Brook Street, it was the Elm Street property, which, so we've done that agricultural restriction, land acquisition once before. So we do have some history, we can go back to the file cabinet and try to find that. Maybe we can, you know, discuss it amongst ourselves at least in our next meeting, to try to familiarize ourselves with how it works. And then, yeah, no, certainly, that'd be something that we can explore.
We also have an agricultural motivation that they're on the run on the town. And it might make sense to reach out to them, see if they've ever looked into this as well or explored anything. And in fact, they may have ideas of things they're thinking about, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think we really need to be a little more proactive anyway, agriculturally and just you, open space, which I think falls more on the conservation than it does really the Open Space Committee. But of exploring, I mean, that was probably hand in hand with, you know, so far for the library building was also that, you know, a lot of people that wanted us to see us trying to preserve some more open space and open space.
I think open space is a big issue in town, because you just see all of these poses of urban development and pretty similar, not gonna have in green space. I don't know, so what options are there for people and projects, you know, but how would we help them? But I think we should definitely be looking at that.
Well, we have land use also. And again, same thing, there may be something for land use that we wanna look at, whether it's purchase or revitalization. That falls under our purview potentially. Goes to the same thing that we're all just saying now, is reaching out and letting everyone know we're looking for ideas. We're looking for plans, we're looking for recommendations.
I think there's a large number of people, I think even amongst ourselves, who would love to see, you know, big pieces of open space preserved. But the reality of it is, when you're competing with, you know, however many millions of dollars for a development versus what we're able to fund it, it becomes difficult. But sometimes it's better to put together a lot of little pieces than it is to go after one big one too, so. You know, who can break up some of this, I think it would be productive, but probably, like you said, it's gonna take a prior collaborative effort between Ag Commission, Open Space, and, yeah, maybe for certain points.
Agricultural restrictions are even within affordable range for us. And because we're right to partner, the state kicks in even more money. So that gives us, you know, a more playbook, so.
Sometimes it doesn't hurt too, to even, like if you know somebody who's kind of passionate about seeing the town preserved, to talk about the possibility of just placing a conservation restriction, because there are some people that, you know, do own, you know, decent parcels of the land that might be interested in exploring that, or they have life use, but you, that you know that it's locked in, that somebody's not gonna come in and, and, you know, sell it in the future and always explore those avenues too, which is a good option.
I thought, I thought along those lines would be to find out and we might wanna look into whether or not, and I don't know the answer to this, so, we are able to ask residents or encourage residents, if they would like, to put their land in a trust, either for conservation or even for us.
So not us, but open space can certainly do it. So there's actually, you know.
Looking at me, I'm the guy I am.
You are.
Are you the only member?
But.
You know, Peter is on that too.
So, but I know that yearly, though, there is, there's usually a small grant to do like community outreach. So I remember Ellen bringing it up like my first year and it's, and then I remember seeing it at some point in the next year. But I think it's, but it's around fifteen hundred bucks, but what it is, is to set up, you know, like almost like a, a public hearing. And then they can, you can do some mailers and things like that, so you could almost take like the, we have the, the map and living property list, so you can go off of that and try to, you know, target, you know, certain parcels. Like if you know somebody's, you know, that could use for agriculture or conservation, but it was specifically the community outreach to put those things into agricultural restrictions or conservationist land trust and things like that. I'll go back, I'm sure I have it somewhere in one of my folders, okay. So, and I'll, I'll look up the program and pass it along to you, because.
I would be curious as to whether it says, if somebody puts their land in a trust, can, do they have an option, or do we have an option to accept it as allocated as well?
Well, it says whether it's definitely around trust, but around potentially with agricultural concept, without restrictions. The town needs to be made a named party as an owner in most situations, if the town's, but, so I don't know the details, I mean, how it would work, but doing something like that is possible, but that is a caveat. Town becomes a named owner party, or whatever small percentage that might be, but nonetheless. So, you know, it's something people have to factor in when you're looking at all that kind of stuff, so.
Well, and that's what's nice, I think, because I remember going back to the beginning of Open Space, is because we did have someone come in and tell us a little bit more about it in detail. Was like, that's what they did, was they gave you all those fine details of how each specific restriction or land trust or whatever might be worked, which was nice. Definitely something.
And CPC can be a piece of that, right?
Right, because I mean, like how you said, how you mean, like, you know, the town has to contribute X amount. That's real similar to what was happening with the Trails Committee, they, you know, they needed seventeen thousand so that the state would give them ninety. You know, so it's always, there's always some sort of local business that needs to be done to, to make those things happen, to get the contribution. It's not always like complete matching funds, but it's always, like Dan said, it's a little bit more favorable in those situations.
I'd say there's open space members preventing sprawl, which is a lot more complicated position, like what has something to do with.
What is it, what was the term?
Preventing sprawl was just endless development of one and two acre lots of two inches of land, this is a town, so. But I did wanna say about land use committees, that land use, I'm on land use committee, that has, we have done our best over the years to keep the town's largest parcels intact and put them into the auction. But I think land use committee's role has come to an end with the Supreme Court decision this year that towns have to give full compensation to the owners of properties that are being taken for taxes. That's effectively what the court ruled, so. There's gonna be no more of the practice of acquiring huge parcels of land just for the back taxes. Kind of have to compensate owners the full value.
Full value minus the tax.
Right.
Good, at least.
Yes, yeah, compensate that after taking taxes.
I mean, that is something to keep in mind though, because that might become where there's more increased opportunities to purchase those lands, especially if it's a collaboration between conservation and CPC.
Probably a lot more expensive.
Yeah, well, that was always. Yeah, well, that was always a big, a big thing when we were discussing, you know, avenues for funding the library was, you know, it would be great if you're fond of open space, but what's the price tag on a lot of these items somewhere? Like, I know, just for instance, that, the, the, the boat ramp road project, which is, is, is zoned open space and recreation, it's not, they're not buildable lots. It's twenty-six thousand square feet, it's right around a half an acre. That was forty-three to forty-seven thousand in twenty nineteen, so now, you know, I don't know if it's doubled, but let's just call it sixty for a half an acre of land that you can't even do anything with.
Well, that's in a floodplain also.
If it's not built, yeah.
It's not built, and it's in a floodplain.
Right, well, just, there was a, something that came up about the some, the possibility of it being built. Or, you know, if you take, you know, if you're taking land that's, you know, technically open and buildable, then obviously the price is significantly higher. So that was just a, it's gonna cost us, you know, at least fifty thousand to, for a half an acre, so I can only imagine what it'd be if we were trying to buy a ten or a twenty acre parcel, so.
We gotta decide on that too, though, because we are a right to farm community, similar to what you were saying earlier. If you had a larger piece of land that met the criteria, potentially between CPC and state grant and land use and so forth, it may be possible, if you put everything together, to put the right, right, together.
Right, it's super collaborative.
A super collaborative effort to make that happen, but we're not there yet, so unless you have land that's potentially identified.
So, there's two, there's two sources of land that I can see that are not easily figured out. One is landlocked parcels, some of them with kind of mysterious ownership, uh, that are adjacent to existing town properties. Another, you know, and once landlocked parcels get, once somebody sells, they're gonna, this whole avalanche of land, formerly landlocked parcels being acquired by developers. So, they have to be on top of it, that's tricky. Uh, another is Dyson Industries, what is their intention, what are they doing? They have huge holdings of land with the town. We had talked in this committee about having to come in sometime, trying to get them to show their hand a little bit.
They're in the middle of suing us, so that.
It is, it's, you know, more contentious, I think.
Yeah.
Oh, for our sales.
Anybody else have anything else, new projects? I need a subject system. Sorry, that's eligible.
Is it storage objects?
Oh, it's a storage, it's not storage objects, is it?
No, just kidding.
So Elizabeth is, is away on vacation, um, so I don't have the minutes from five eighteen, so we'll just have to piggyback, we'll do, we'll do a double set. As far as the calendar goes, our next meeting would be Thursday, September twenty-first, that's, that would be the Thursday. Uh, I kind of, I don't know how I arrived at this, but I made today's five o'clock to, when, I think we, we, we're doing five thirty. Is everybody wanna go back to five thirty? A little bit, not so tight, because some of us get a lot of work in.
That's a motion, I'll vote, I'll second it.
Yeah, no, we don't think we need to, I, I just messed up, and I'm like.
No, that's fine.
Because he asked me, he goes, five, and I went, I don't know how that happened.
I'd love five.
Five, it usually works better for me too, I don't know what I was thinking. So the next meeting will be. Any public input?
No, sure.
So a little something? Are you okay this summer?
I'm gonna block you there. You know, developers, they're gonna have a major impact on this community. And open space conservation, we're really gonna take a look at preserving the land for a lot of reasons. Not just the financial impact, but also cleaning up, preserving habitat for the animals. Right, there's a big deal for that.
Thank you in the habitat.
Mm-hmm.
Now, the more people you put on the land, unless oxygen, stuff needed for you.
That's selfish. Then, does the town have any kind of moratorium? This is kind of an inside question, but does the town have any kind of moratorium on the numbers of homes that eventually can be built for the population signs or anything like that that they've ever looked at?
Not really, until we meet our forty B quota, no. And they don't count Lincoln Village, they do count it and they don't, to my purposes of that, it should count.
Forty B does count for Lincoln Village.
Only for some things.
Correct?
Yeah, not for meeting the forty B thing, they don't count it for that for some reason.
Well.
I don't know.
They have counted, which isn't right.
Okay, but we can, we can have that conversation separately, because it's on the survey report.
There's also a forty D.
Right.
Forty B meeting quote unquote hasn't met in a long, long time, and we're coming up on a, you guys can talk about it. Forty B threshold, I've, I've.
I'm gonna sign a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned at five thirty, as they say.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Forty B.
Well, if they don't count it against the forty B, but they do count it for other things, that's, um.
Do you want me to send you a, a donation form?
Limited income, I wouldn't.